I'll show you this here.
You have one minute to figure it out.
I'll just do none.
Okay, it's, um. Hey, Tony, where's your face? I kind of like to see who I'm talking to. So, let me ask you a question, Tony, since you're right there. Have you seen Ron Chandler, or is he not going to be here tonight, or? I'm just wondering if we should wait for him or not. Allison, you have anything to add?
I know that he asked me for the Zoom info that Kathy had sent, so, and I know Kathy just resent it, so. I think he should be planning on attending. That was the last I heard. Hey, Richard's there in the office.
Oh, hey, Richard, can't see you, but. Okay, so, should we, wait a minute, I had to update my Zoom info to even get on this meeting today, so maybe he's having the same difficulty.
Yeah, I did too.
Maybe. We'll give him one more minute, and then he'll catch up. Okay, good. There he is.
Oh, great.
Hey, Ron, how are you?
Nice to be here.
Yeah, you ready?
Yep.
Okay, everybody ready? Okay.
On record.
Thank you, Kathy. Would you like to do a roll call?
Sure. Dick Anderson. Judy Casper.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Riley Hogland.
Here.
Diane Coos.
Here.
Rick Mark.
I'm here.
And Mitch Parsons.
Here.
Okay, um, we are now in the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency meeting. It's a special meeting today of June 15th, and it's just a couple minutes after 5 o'clock. And first of all, I guess we'll ask Tony if there are any community members there that wish to speak. Okay, thanks. And those of you who would like to send us some comments, you can do that through public comment, all one word, at lincolncity.org, and we'd love to hear from you. We did get one letter of testimony, which I'll talk about in a minute. And, so, we'll get started today with, um, I'd just like to say the reason, our reason for being here at this special meeting is to formally move the proposed Roads End Villages Urban Renewal Plan to the Planning Commission, to the Lincoln County Commission for a briefing, and then to City Council for a hearing and approval. So we're, today, we're kind of like checking a box, moving us along in the pathway to actually beginning a new district and a new part of history for Lincoln City. I just want to do a little bit of reminder for any of those of you out in the community watching us this evening. A little bit of a reminder of what urban renewal is. It's a program under state law and implemented locally that allows for the concentrated use of public, I mean, excuse me, of property tax revenue to upgrade certain designated areas of a city or county. Property taxes do not increase because of the program, but the tax growth portion, known as the Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, is reallocated to fund projects in the district area. Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency will make the final bond payment on the existing district known as the Year 2000 Plan, and that will be made on December 1st, 2020, so we're looking to sunset one and start up a new one. And looking forward, after the Urban Renewal Agency and City Council reviewed two options for creating a new district, City Council directed staff to move forward with developing a plan for Roads End Villages Plan. An advisory committee was developed to assist with the planning and outreach for this new district and project list. There were 11 members that included representatives from Lincoln City Council and Urban Renewal Agency, Lincoln City Planning Commission, representatives from major taxing districts, and community members. I want to thank the members for their time, their questions, their deliberations, and participation. They were active and determined to get the best plan possible. Thanks especially to those two community members, Janet Knight and Laurel Barton, who represented two areas of the planned area. We've come a long way, but have further to go, which will involve future community outreach to conduct community visioning. That should be a lot of fun. Can't wait for that. And through the community visioning process, projects will be further refined and prioritized as funds are accrued. And to see the full list of staff, consultant, committee members, outreach methods, and projects, please refer to the Packet in the City's website under Urban Renewal. And now, I'd just like to say that we did receive one letter of testimony, and that was from North Lincoln Fire and Rescue. I want to acknowledge that. And ask staff, if there aren't any objections, I'd like to ask staff to just include that in the packet for City Council when we can actually discuss that then. Thank you. And now, I would like to turn it over to Jody Mesher and Allison Robertson. And first of all, thank you very much for this heavy lift to get us here. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair Hinton. I appreciate you summarizing and encapsulating everything, and we do appreciate those community members that served on the advisory committee that have gotten us this far. Obviously, Jody and Elaine have done a lot of the heavy lifting on the plan, and also some city staff. We want to recognize parks and public works who have provided a lot of input, finance, have all had their hands on this at one point or another in order to get us to this point, so thank you. So, we're really here tonight, as you mentioned, to review the plan and report, and find out if you have any questions or any discussion about it before you decide whether or not to move it forward to the Planning Commission and the county commissioners, and then to the City Council, wearing your other hats, for a formal consideration on July 27th. We do have a PowerPoint presentation. We can walk through these things. And Elaine Howard and Jody are here to go ahead with that presentation, and then they can commu-, oh, yes, Chair.
Allison, before you move on, would you mind introducing Elaine? If anyone is watching, they might not know who she is.
Sure, yes. Elaine Howard with Elaine Howard Consulting is here. She has quite a bit of experience with helping us with our existing urban renewal plan when we needed to make a minor or a substantial amendment to that plan, or just general questions and guidance. And then also, obviously, helping us out with creating this new plan, and has helped many other cities, and is a lot of reassurance for us when we're, this is a new plan. Obviously, we haven't done this sort of a thing since 1988. So it has been quite a while, and it's an exciting time to think about possibilities for funding and projects for a different part of Lincoln City. And then Jody Mesher we have here, she's with the Rare AmeriCorps program through July, and busily working on wrapping up some projects. And we couldn't have gotten this far without her help, I know. Some other things would have had to take a backseat if she hadn't been here, so, thank you, Jody. Okay, so, let's see. I know we've coordinated with IT to figure out how to transition between the PowerPoints and the presenters, so. Jody, do you want to go ahead with that, or Elaine?
I will share the screen. Was there other, when I looked at the agenda, was there any other business that was to be transacted before this?
Nope, I'm moving you right along.
Okay, I'm going to share the screen.
I'm watching my agenda.
Okay, do you all have that?
Yep.
Great, and I think Jody is starting.
Yes, thank you, Elaine. And thank you, Chair Hinton, for the introduction and the brief description of what urban renewal is and how it can be used. And as you mentioned, what we are here today to do is to review the draft plan and report. And we'll be asking you to decide whether or not to move the draft plan and report forward through the next formal steps. If you do decide to do that, the next thing that will happen will be the plan and report will go before the Planning Commission for a review of conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. It will next go to the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners for a briefing meeting. And lastly, it will go to City Council for a hearing and a vote on a non-emergency ordinance. And that is, we're planning for July 27th. And if that plan is voted on at that date, then that would be, that would be the time when the plan would be adopted. So we're not asking you to adopt the plan tonight. We're asking you to review it and determine whether or not it should go forward through that process. So a little bit of background about how we've got to this point, because it's been a few years at this point. So a feasibility study was began in 2018 and completed in March of 2019 of two different areas of town where an urban renewal area might be a good tool for the city to use. So that was the Roads End and Villages at Cascadehead area, and then also Nell Scott area. And it was determined that the Roads End Villages at Cascadehead area would be really a lot of potential there for development, and City Council voted or approved the creation of a plan to review. So that was back in 2019. And as Chair Hinton said, an advisory committee was formed, and that consisted of community members and representatives from overlapping taxing districts, and as well as representatives from the city. And so that advisory committee met four times, and they were really instrumental in talking through everything that would be involved in the plan, with the boundary of the area, the projects to be included, and the project financials as well. And once the draft plan was created, the advisory committee met a fourth time to review the plan and make a few final edits before we brought that back to you all. And we also had pretty involved community input process, which was really exciting to be a part of. We had two public forums, January 7th and the 2nd on February 18th, I believe. And those were open to all community members in Lincoln City and key stakeholders that were involved in the area. And we walked through what this plan would look like, and those public forums really focused on the projects that would be completed in the area. So we were able to answer a lot of questions and get people's feedback on what projects were high priority in the area and what projects were not high priority. At the same time, we created an online survey for folks that were unable to attend either of those public forums to get their feedback as well. And the last part of that community input process was a formal meeting with the taxing districts. So we invited representatives from the overlapping taxing districts to a meeting to go over what this project is looking like and what the potential impacts would be to the overlapping taxing districts. So once we had this list of projects, and we had the boundary and the estimated financials, we had two briefings with City Council, and we were able to share again what the financial impacts would look like and what projects would be included in this plan. And lastly, we had a formal consult and confer process with the overlapping taxing district. And those were letters that we had sent out to all taxing districts overlapping in the urban renewal area, sent out on May 7th of 2020. And that was, again, a overview of the financial implications if this plan is adopted, and then a copy of the draft plan and report. And we asked the taxing districts to send any feedback back for public comment within 45 days. So we have received one testimony from the North Lincoln Fire District, so we appreciate that feedback. And I know this is included several times in the plan and report, but for anyone watching the meeting at home, this is the boundary of what the urban renewal area will look like if it is adopted. So anything in the pink is what would be included. And I did want to mention that any, for any project to be completed with urban renewal dollars, it needs to be within the urban renewal boundary. So we did have a few minor edits as we went along to determine what projects are going to be done, so we knew if a project needed to be completed, it needs to be in this urban renewal area. Are there any questions about this boundary before we move on? So, for the urban renewal plan, if it's adopted, the maximum indebtedness is $87,100,000. So this is the total amount of dollars that can be used for projects to be completed in this area with urban renewal dollars. And the timeframe is estimated at 27 years. From the feasibility study, we originally were anticipating it to be a 25-year plan, but City Council has decided on a voluntary 15% under levy over the entire Tax Increment Finance District. So they also made the decision at that time to increase the duration of the plan by two years to match the amount of dollars that would be lost by doing that 15% under levy. Part of the plan, it goes through the list of the projects to be included, and that's a pretty significant portion of the plan. And the project categories are transportation, economic development, there are parks, trails, and open space, the public works utilities, community connections and appearance, emergency preparedness, resiliency, and mitigation, and the plan administration. And just like with the boundary, for any project to be included, it needs to be listed in, as a project description within the plan. So you may notice that some of the project descriptions are fairly vague, and that was done intentionally, because as we go through community visioning process, we'll kind of refine and get more specific about what those projects will look like as needed, but they're left a little bit more vague, so that way the projects that need to be completed can be. Do we have any questions about the project categories? Or any of the projects in particular that you might have read through in the plan? Okay, and then I wanted to go through some more sections of the plan. One section talks about the different amendments and how the agency would go about adopting amendments if they're needed. So one type of amendment is a substantial amendment, and that would be if the agency decides to increase acreage in the area or increase the maximum indebtedness. And if that type of amendment is made to the plan, it would need to go through the same formal adoption process as the plan. So that means a public hearing, consultant confer with the overlapping taxing districts, and a briefing meeting with the county. So that would be, like the name says, it'd be a pretty substantial process if those kind of amendments are needed. And then a minor amendment would be any amendment to the plan that's not substantial. So if any kind of amendment like that is to be made to the plan, then that would go, come from the urban renewal agency. And the council-approved plans, or council-approved amendments to the plan would be amendments to, I believe, the financial under levy. So as we have discussed, the City Council has already decided to approve a 15% under levy for the entire urban renewal district. Another section of the plan that it walks through is the revenue sharing that I just mentioned, is the 15% under levy, and we'll talk a little bit more about that specifically when Elaine goes through the financial information. And then another important part of the plan is the relationship to the local objectives. So that walks through the different projects of the plan and how they really tie into the local objectives and what the agency and what Lincoln City's overall goals are for sustainable development. Okay, revenue sharing. As I mentioned, we, our first briefing, once this plan was starting to come together, was to the City Council on February 24th. And at that point, we had concerns, we had heard concerns from overlapping taxing districts that City Council was aware of, of potential impacts to the taxing districts. And the discussion was around trying to minimize the financial impacts to the taxing districts. And that is where that decision came was for the 15% annual under levy across the entire urban renewal district. And then again, as I said, it was increased duration of two years is our current estimate. Oh, and I did want to mention the urban renewal and tax increment finance are two different terms that we use for this plan. So that's the TIF and urban renewal. They're used almost interchangeably, and they're the same thing. The reason we, we've done that, the tax increment finance is a name that has been used as a best practice by other agencies. However, we want to continue to incorporate the urban renewal name, because that's been used effectively in Lincoln City, and that's something that residents would be more aware than the TIF term. So I just wanted to mention that those TIF and urban renewal are used together in this plan. So that's the main components of the plan that will be, if you approve the formal process, that will be presented to City Council on July 27th. Are there any questions about the plan specifically before we cover what's in the accompanying report? I don't know if people are raising their hands, but I can't see everyone, so.
If anyone does wish to speak, I can only see four of you at a time right now. And so, if we don't see any hands, I think you might just have to speak up so I can hear you. Okay.
Okay, and also, we'll have more time at the end for a more formal discussion after we've seen all of the financial implications. So, the sections of the report that will be accompanying the formal plan. The first section is, goes through the projects that are listed in the plan and the existing conditions. So that's done to show why those projects are needed and to show improvement as the plan is implemented. And then we also go through the estimated cost of each project. And those costs are assumed that the urban renewal agency will leverage funds. We don't want to assume that the urban renewal agency will pay upfront the entirety of all of these projects. They want to be done leveraged as much as possible. We also have the financial analysis of the plan. And this is through 2048, which is when the plan is estimated to sunset. And again, it's based on assumptions of development in the area. And this is something that can be reviewed and updated annually by the urban renewal agency. And then we have the tax increment revenues required. And we can go through, again, those financials in a little bit with Elaine. And the revenue sharing that I've mentioned before with the 15% under levy. And then the impacts of tax increment financing, and that's kind of, the name of it's self-explanatory. It goes through the financials of what this means as funds are accrued to the urban renewal agency. And lastly, the report goes through the existing conditions within the area, and it documents the occurrence of blighted areas within the urban renewal district. So that's the, very briefly, the report. So I, at this time, want to turn it over to Elaine to go through all of the financial information and what these impacts would mean to the agency, to the city, and the other overlapping taxing districts.
Jody, before you leave, could you just real quickly give a definition of blighted areas? Because I think that's something that's confused quite a bit out there in the rural world.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Can I actually turn that over to Elaine? I don't want to misspeak and give the wrong definition.
You may. Good handoff, and good job, Jody. So blight is defined in ORS 457, specifically what things are blighted. And I know that was one of the questions at one of the community forums that we had. And blight specifically talks about underdevelopment of property or lack of development on property. And it talks about the need for improvement in infrastructure, so streets, water, sewer systems. And within this urban renewal area, those blighted conditions are instances where your infrastructure is, could be improved within the area, projects that are listed within your master plans that show that there are deficiencies within the area. And then the fact that there are many parcels within the area that are undeveloped but are zoned for full development and hopefully will be developed over the life of the plan. Does that answer your question, Chair Hinton?
Yes, thank you. It's for folks out there, because that discussion comes up every once in a while, so thank you.
So, we've been asked a couple of times, especially by the mayor, to make sure that we cover the fact that the Year 2000 Development Plan will be terminating. And this information, part of it was taken from the annual report that you have to prepare the city each year that says what the impacts of your urban renewal areas are. So this shows for each taxing district what the impacts were for last year for the fiscal year in 2020, so that's this year that we're in now. And just using a 3% growth rate, what we would project next year for those impacts to be, and then projected revenue upon termination of the urban renewal area. So, in two more slides, I'll be able to compare the fact that what you see in the final column on this, in this final column, is the money expected in fiscal year in 2022 for each taxing district. And we'll be able to look then directly at the initial year of the proposed urban renewal area to see what those impacts are, both in terms of what they'll be getting back from the Year 2000 Development Plan within the year 2000 development plan within their revenues and what might be taken if a new plan is adopted. Are there any questions on this slide? This, the next two pages come directly out of the report, and they are projections for impacts on the taxing districts annually for the life of the plan. You can see that the city of Lincoln City itself has the highest impact in terms of the general government, that's the slide you're looking at now. And the county has the next highest impact. And that's because your tax rates are the highest tax rates within the proposed area. So this is a general government. In Oregon's taxing system, we have two separate categories of taxes. We have the general government, and then we have the education. So these are the projected impacts on education. What we have to remember for both the school district and the education service district is that those impacts are indirect because of the state school fund. The school district and the education service district get their monies from the state school fund, and those monies are allocated on a per pupil basis based on the number of students within their service area. That per pupil number is established at the legislature. And property taxes are one component of the state school fund. They are not the only component of the state school fund. So as the legislature determines that per pupil ratio, they then figure out what those funding sources are. So we call that an indirect impact to the states, to the two specific taxing jurisdictions. It is, however, a direct impact on that state school fund, but the legislature acknowledges that urban renewal, enterprise zones, housing zones, all impact property tax revenues, and that, that's part of their whole balancing act, is figuring out how to allocate those funds. The next slide shows the information from the first slide about at fiscal year end 2022, the expected increased revenues to the property taxing jurisdictions, the roads and villages plan proposed, what the impact would be and what the difference would be. And you can see for the initial year, all of those taxing districts would actually be receiving quite a bit more money. For the county, it's $241,000 more money because one district is closing, it's at the end of its tax increment revenue collection, so those are high. The other district is just beginning, so those tax increment revenues are fairly low. So for a number of years, if you look at the Lincoln County School District, the first one, well, let's, let's look at one that's not a school. The city of Lincoln City, it's 251,000, first year is 49,000. If you look back on the city of Lincoln City slide, 251 is the amount that they'll be getting back. And if you look at this slide, it's not till fiscal year end 2027 that it reaches that mark of that amount of tax increment revenue. And again, remember, in that year 2000 development plan, the city's already giving back a lot of revenue to the taxing jurisdictions. They've been doing that under levy for the, was it 2014, Allison? When, yes, she's, yes, when you did your substantial amendment. So the mayor wanted to make sure that people understood that one is going away and the new one is starting, and this shows what those differences are. Are there any questions on that? So as Jody said earlier, the city sent out the formal consult and confer letters to all the taxing jurisdictions. That is required by statute, and the 45-day time period is required by statute. We sent that out early just to make sure that everybody got those in time and were able to review it and respond. We've had a lot of communication over the development of this plan with the fire district. Since that letter went out, we did, the city did receive an email with some questions on the financial conditions, and then, as Chair Hinton said, they did send a formal letter. The process that you go through with the taxing districts requires that in the ordinance to be considered the adoption of an urban renewal plan, if you receive formal written communication from a taxing district, you must either accept, reject, or modify their proposal. So you've received that letter, and between, if you decide to move ahead between now and the city council meeting, staff will be working on each component of that letter to address whether you are accepting the recommendation, rejecting it, or asking for a modification of it. So that will actually be in the body of the ordinance and probably as an attachment to the ordinance. We also received, the city did letter, an email from the school district superintendent of general support, and she has given a, a very nice compliment on being included in the process and general support for the plan. And this is a time for any questions over any component of the presentation or the planner report?
I had a little question.
Yes.
Hear me.
Oh, sorry.
I just noticed that the very bottom line number on the amount of tax revenue to be, go back there, right there at the bottom right, no, go forward again, the 101 million at the bottom?
Yes.
And we're expecting to, to receive 87 million in money that we can use for projects. So the difference between that 87 and the 101, is that, what, interest paid on the bond or cushion?
No, that is financing fees, or bonds, and interest paid on the bonds.
Okay.
So in urban renewal, the debt, they define in ORS 457 what maximum indebtedness is, and it does not include the interest paid on debt. Because we never know, as you're preparing an urban renewal plan, what those interest rates will be. We, so we put in an estimate of those. So that's, that's what, that's exactly what the difference is, and that's a very astute notice of those different numbers. Any other questions?
Well, I, I had another question that was maybe going to come later, but, well, okay, this is, this is maybe a more broader process question. So when the time comes to, I'm not sure the terminology, issue a bond? I understand that it's just a few years down the road before we can actually get money to start working on projects. Do, do we get, do we get a bond or issue a bond for the, that 87 million dollars? And that's basically money in the bank to start to use on projects? Or does that come in in increments, or how does that work?
That comes in in increments. You may only issue a bond for the amount that you can actually pay debt service on, so it's like a mortgage. You, you have X amount of money that you can afford to pay for your bond, and the amount of the bond relates to the amount of money that you have coming in from your tax increment proceeds. In the financial part of the report, there are tables that show when those bonds might be issued. And those, again, are estimates, and those estimates include what's called a 1.5 debt service coverage ratio. So we're saying for every dollar that you need to pay in debt service, you also need to have another 50 cents sitting there as a reserve to make sure that you, if anything happens to your tax proceeds, that you don't go into default. So the money comes in over time as your tax increment comes in. And at certain points, your finance director will say, I think we have enough money that we can issue a bond. And then that will become part of your whole budget process to determine how much of a bond you want to issue and what you'll, what projects you'll spend that on.
Which goes right to my next question, which is, pardon the cliche, but kind of a rubber hits the road kind of question, which is, at, at some point, we have to decide, or somebody's have got to decide, what projects to pick and choose, and what, and, and in the early years, there's going to be less money. So, but I'm, I'm thinking that there are some really big projects out there that are going to be very expensive, some of these transportation projects, you know, road and connecting to the highway or whatever, I didn't even know was practical. I guess I'm concerned about the, who sets the priorities and who, who knows what should be done, I've asked this before at other meetings, it's just sort of a mystery to me, who, who figures out? You know, you're building a, whenever I pass somebody building a house, I've always gone, hmm, they had to figure out like where the water goes in and, and where's the electric line and plan all that ahead of time. And I guess I'm just worried on the magnitude of this project that seems like it would be kind of easy to sort of get out in front of yourself. And, and, Mr. Chandler, yeah, you, it sounds like you kind of know where I'm going.
Yeah, the, the easy answer to that is that you're actually going to end up doing that through your budget process. As the, as the funds start to come in, as they start to become available, as we look at starting to do debt payments and estimating how much we'll be able to pay back each year and everything else, that all takes place really in two, two combined processes. One is just continued work sessions on, on your priorities, and then the second is through your budget process.
Allison, do you want to talk about the visioning a little bit, too?
Sure. I think the best way to talk about project priorities outside of the required annual budget process, which we're all familiar with, is to look at our year 2000 development plan and how that went forward and how those projects were prioritized. Basically, the, the urban renewal plan sat for 10 years until it had enough money to do a bond. And then, once a bond was, was done, I think actually, maybe from year five to 10, there were a couple of small bonds that were done for a sidewalk here or a water line there, really some poor and immediately needed smaller-scale projects that were important to city infrastructure and were in the urban renewal area. And so it also helped give the city a little practice on how does this bond transaction thing go for an urban renewal agency? So in that way, we kind of got ramped up and got things started. And then after 10 years, we decided that we needed to do a Taft community vision, and we had consultants help us with that. And it was a pretty large endeavor and lots of community input, lots of meetings with stakeholders like ODOT and business owners and property owners, to try to create a vision of how everybody wanted to see Taft change or stay the same over time. And then that discussion really shook out what those projects were that were possible to do within the plan. And then through the budget process, that's how the projects got prioritized. So that's how we created our facade improvement loan, because we heard property owners saying, hey, I want to make some improvements, but I need a little assistance. Are you able to help me with some design help and then with a loan? And the 0% interest loan program was born out of that community vision for Taft to really help create an incentive for people who were on the fence about making improvements but just needed a little nudge to say, hey, a 0% interest loan is a really good way for me to invest in my property over 10 years to pay that back. So that's just kind of a general way that the year 2000 plan got started. Obviously, you know, there were some discussions, I'm sure, at the time about what part of town really was most blighted and needed the most public assistance. And, you know, there was a lot of sand deposition that was coming into 51st Street. We were not seeing properties redevelop. We were not seeing private investment happen in that area. And we recognized that it was a very strong tourism amenity. And so that's, I think, how the discussion, you know, helped figure out that Taft was the first part of the urban renewal area to focus on.
You know, thank you, because that actually answered another question I had written down, which is how flexible is the planning over time? Because I know there's this component where we, we need to list the projects now, and then it sort of made me a little nervous about how committed we have to be, and, and, but you just answered that question. It's, it definitely, or the way I put it on my, my note to myself here was if, if the pace of, of development or the, just, you know, some problems that crop up that are unexpected problems now, how can we adjust for things that we just can't really think about, you know, even consider right now? And you, you answered that, so thanks. That's, that's really all I had.
Yeah, no problem. I mean, for example, we didn't anticipate that we would have a recession in the middle of our urban renewal area, or that Measure 5 and 50 would have occurred that dialed back the appreciation of real property. So there were some things that were not anticipated in 1988 when we created our plan. And, you know, a, a change, change is inevitable. So I think that ORS 457 is set up to be as specific as we can during the time that we create a plan, but still be adaptable, you know? As I mentioned, Elaine has helped us in the past with walking us through minor amendments and substantial amendments to the plan. If we need to change a boundary or if we need to add a project to the plan, there is flexibility that is built into the process, assuming that we go through the required when there's a public hearing or a public notice, and then ultimately up to the city, sorry, the urban renewal agency to make those decisions about that plan once it has been
Hey, are there any other questions before we move to a motion? Okay, I would, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the three of you for Allison and Jody and Elaine for getting us this far. It's really appreciated. There's a lot of outreach and a lot of input and a lot of people with a bazillion questions, and you were able to answer them all. And I really appreciate your leadership on this, your hard work, and, and I'm looking forward to, what, 10 years, 20 years, when we can actually do something with this. So anyway, I want, I just want to say that to you, thank you. Now I'm looking to our urban renewal members for a motion to move this forward. Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion that the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency forward the roads and slash villages at Cascadehead urban renewal TIF plan to the Lincoln City Planning Commission for the review of the plan's conformance to the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, to the Lincoln County Commission for Briefing, and then to the Lincoln City City Council for their review and vote on adoption.
I think I heard a second, but could you say it louder, please?
Say it louder? No.
Yes, I don't, I don't know who said it. Riley said it? Okay, Riley, thank you. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, may? Okay, we, we have, we've done a wonderful checking off that box. Thank you so much.
One step closer.
Yep. Congratulations to, to urban renewal. Now, the only thing left is if any members have any comments, and I'd like to start, oh, that's nice to see you all. oh, that's nice to see you all up there. Okay, I'd like to start with Vice Chair, Mr. Parsons. Any comments?
Yeah, not necessarily urban renewal, but it's relative. The city's going to move forward with starting the process to name the Knoll and rename the Villages at Cascade Head, which isn't actually in this county, so I don't know why we ever called it that. The process should be starting soon, and hopefully, we should be getting input from the public with, but, bleh, I can't talk tonight, before July.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Not tonight.
Okay. Ms. Casper, anything?
No. I, again, like you, thank everybody for the tremendous amount of work on this. It's quite a process to put together.
Very cool. Ms. Kooz, you are muted.
I just want to say thank you, too. It's what a project to take on. You've been living it, probably. So thank you. But other than that, no, it's, good job.
Member Holblund.
I don't have anything. Thank you all for your, for the work, for real. It's, it's a lot, and it's taken a long time, so I appreciate it. It's exciting to move forward.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I'm in good shape. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mark?
I'll add my thanks to Allison, Jody, Elaine for the complex project and for the very clear explanations. I just really appreciate that. And the other thing I want to add is, I'm really glad that there are a couple of members of city council who are under 60, because when even continuity, when, when this actually comes to fruition, not that those two young fellows are actually going to necessarily still be around doing this, but if they are, I, I think it would be a, a big help to have some, I guess institutional memory, is that the, is that the term? And some staff as well, so that's, and I, I think that council in 10, 15 years is going to go, wow, I can't believe that the previous council put this together. So I hope they appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. And I want to give an opportunity to Mr. Chandler, do you have anything for us tonight?
I don't. Just thanks and to our staff and to you, the city, or the urban renewal agency, for a job well done.
Okay, thank you. And if there are any other comments, now's your opportunity. Okay, with that, we are adjourned, and thank you all so very much. Good evening.
Good night, all.